Good evening and welcome to the special city council meeting for Tuesday, July 12, or January 12th, 2021. Let the roll call reflect that all council members are present. I don't see Councilmember Lopez back, but he should be joining us shortly. Um, we'll start with reading the council chair determination to hold electronic meetings without anchor locations. It reads, "In accordance with Utah Code 52-4-2074, I have determined that conducting meetings of the Ogden City Council at an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present due to the infectious nature and potentially dangerous health effects of contracting the COVID-19 virus. This determination is based on the following: The Center for Disease Control and Prevention has determined that COVID-19 is easily spread between or among people who are in close contact with each other through airborne respiratory droplets and may be spread by people who are non-symptomatic. The state of Utah has developed the COVID-19 transmission index through a collaborative effort amongst state and local health officials, elected officials, the hospital industry, and business leaders. As of January 1st, 2021, Weber County was in the high transmission category, limiting group gatherings to 10 people or less. Based on the foregoing, all public meetings, including work sessions and meetings of the redevelopment agency, will be held electronically through January 31st, 2021. Information on how to connect to the electronic public meetings will be posted on each agenda. The public may comment during the electronic meeting, in public hearings, on agenda items designated for input, or during the general public comment period. Written public comments may also be submitted through the following electronic options: telephonic message at 801-629-8158, public comment submission form at ogdencity.com-publicinput, or email at citycouncil@ogdencity.com. And this statement is issued and becomes effective January 12th, 2021." Thank you. With that, we will go ahead and begin, and we'll start with having Vice Chair White lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Chair Blair. If you could all rise, please, and repeat after me. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair White. Now, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Next on the agenda is proposed joint resolution declaring January 18th, 2021 as Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service in Ogden City. And we have asked Councilmember Chaburka to read that for us.
Thank you so much. I'm really honored to read this proclamation. I have to say, over the past couple of years, I've spent the morning on Martin Luther King Day at the Marshall White, at the event that's held there, the Day of Service, and I usually get to read this to that group gathering there. So I'm really gonna miss that this year. It's a highlight of my service for the council to be able to do that. So I'll go ahead and read. Declaring January 18th, 2021, Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service in Ogden City. Whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was an American pastor, activist, and humanitarian, who is best known for his role in the advancement of civil rights using nonviolent civil disobedience, which he received the Nobel Peace Prize in 1965. Dr. King also focused on other important issues, including workers' rights, poverty, war, and others. He was posthumously awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom and the Congressional Gold Medal. And whereas in 1982, following years of lobbying by millions of Americans, President Ronald Reagan signed a bill into law making the third Monday in January a national holiday to celebrate the birth of Dr. King. Martin Luther King Jr. Day was first observed in 1986. And whereas, in 1988, close friends of Dr. King discussed the irony of how so many Americans had fought for a federal holiday honoring Dr. King, yet sadly had become just another day off from work. They knew Dr. King would be disheartened by the disengagement on the day set aside to honor his devotion to social justice. As a result, the Martin Luther King Day Jr. Day of Service was established in Philadelphia. And whereas, federal legislation was signed into law by President Bill Clinton in 1994, challenging all Americans to honor Dr. King by devoting the day to citizen action and volunteer service. Several communities, universities, and organizations across the United States have accepted the challenge and participated in Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service. And whereas, the Utah State Legislature passed a bill in 1986 naming a state holiday, Human Rights Day, that fell on the same day that honored Dr. King. In 2000, a bill introduced by Utah Senate, sorry, Utah State Senator Pete Suazo, to change the state's holiday name to Martin Luther King Jr. Day was passed. And whereas, each year, local organizations, like the Ogden Branch of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, or the NAACP, Marshall White Community Center, and Weber State University unite to sustain the vision of Dr. King and the nation called to action by honoring Dr. King to provide the community with opportunities to learn and grow. Through this day of remembrance, we strive as a community to retain and honor Dr. King's legacy of service. Now therefore, be it resolved, that Ogden City Council and Mayor Michael P. Caldwell hereby proclaim January 18th, 2021, Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service in Ogden City. We encourage residents, schools, businesses, and community groups to celebrate Martin Luther King Jr. Day. We appreciate the efforts of those in our community to build upon Dr. King's legacy by helping others and encourage all residents to engage in service on this special holiday. So this proclamation, I'd like to propose that we approve the joint proclamation.
I second. Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve the joint proclamation by Councilmember Chaburka and a second by Councilmember Lopez. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? That passes, which is sad that we can't all be there in person and clap and cheer, but we're honored to have Betty Sawyer from the Ogden chapter of the NAACP and Tia Nero, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Program Coordinator at Weber State University with us here tonight. And we'd love to hear from both of those if we could.
Ms. Betty, would you like to go first?
I'm gonna yield to beauty in that age.
Yes. First, I wanted to thank the council for this proclamation and for being true to the message of Dr. King. And I wanted to invite all of the council members to be participants as we honor Dr. King in having Iver Mexcindee come and talk to us at Weber State University tomorrow at 6:00 PM. In the chat, I will put the link of how you can register for the event and questions that you may have for Dr. Kendi that you can submit to us as President Mortensen will be interviewing him tomorrow night. So again, thank you so much. And in honor of Dr. King and what Weber State is doing for our events, Ms. Betty is gonna talk about what the NAACP will be doing on Monday on Dr. Martin Luther King's Day. And then for the rest of the week, on Tuesday, Weber State will be holding a Give to a Nonprofit Day. On Wednesday, we'll have an Environmental Impacts Day, where you can do your part by picking up any littering or trash that you see in your area. On Thursday, we'll have a Connect with Your Community by having all of us write a letter to our veterans or to our people within our community who don't have family members or are elderly community members. And then on Friday, we'll have an Act of Kindness by paying someone a visit by doing a drive-through or drive-by and giving them goodies. So again, I will put the link to Dr. Iver Mexcindee's event in the chat. And again, thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you so much.
Yes, and continuing from there, thank you as well on behalf of our Ogden chapter, the NAACP. We look forward to having you join us for the breakfast for all of these years and your ongoing support, not just the event, but the legacy of Dr. King and all that he stood for. We continue to emanate today to make sure that we're living out those Kenyan principles of nonviolence and being of service to others. One of the things that he said, one of his quotes is, "Everyone can be great because everyone can serve," and your role as city council people is a great service. That is a great act of service. So the NAACP, we're having a service project on Saturday, this Saturday, in partnership with Weber State Universities, NAACP College Chapter, and Black Scholars United. Project Success received a donation of 500 brand-new children's coats. And the students will be preparing those to distribute to our organization so that they can get them in the hands of families throughout our community on Saturday from 10 until 2:00 PM at Project Success, and I will share that information as well. And we will, on Monday, the 18th, we will start our morning with Caravan. We were going to try to march, but we were challenged to promote safety in everything that we do and give out the right messages at this time. And being as I worked with COVID assistance, that was an easy call to make. So I see Chief Young there. We're gonna be meeting at the Marshall White Center at 10 o'clock that morning and head out around 10:30 and drive through our town and end up back at the community center. We're encouraging people to decorate their cars or things of that nature, to share messages of freedom and unity. And then we're gonna end the morning with a conversation with emerging leaders. So we've reached out to our youth organizations to have them recommend and send someone that can speak that morning. We're gonna have a dialogue with them around the theme, "Where do we go from here?" Their path forward as young people, what is their vision for the future? And so that'll be a Zoom call, and we will invite you to participate in that. We've also selected one of Dr. King's speeches for us to take time over the next few days to listen to, The Two Americas. And I think it's very fitting to some of the things that we're looking at today around poverty, intergenerational poverty, homelessness, and racial unrest. Where are we and where do we want to go? And how are we gonna work together to get to those ends? So again, thank you so much and look forward to us not taking the day off, but still having the day on and be of service to one another.
Thank you. Thank you both for being here. And thanks to all our community partners for the efforts that they're taking to truly honor Dr. King and making this, like you said, a day on and not a day off, and making our community so much better and a better place. So thank you both. And thank you for all the work that you've put into honoring Dr. King. Would anyone else, does anyone else have any comments?
Chair?
Yes.
I'm like Angela. I attend that breakfast in the morning, and that's been a highlight for the month of January to go ahead and do that. I would suggest on our emails that maybe that information, so we have it, we could have the access, so with Betty and Tia, if you could get that to us some way, then we can make sure the council members get that information.
Great suggestion.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you both for joining us tonight and for everything that you do. If there's no further comments, trying my best to see everyone. Think we're okay? Then we will move forward with reports from administration. And tonight, we have Mayor Caldwell here to talk to us about the appointment of our new police chief. Mayor Caldwell.
Thank you, Chair Blair. I'll just jump in and say thank you, Ms. Betty and Tia, for what you're doing to keep that alive. I think that's really important, more now than ever. So we really appreciate that, and we're happy to be a part of that. Today, it's my honor to bring forward my appointment of Ogden City's next police chief. As I've said for a long time, public safety is paramount to a community's prosperity and well-being, and the search for and selection of the best person to lead this team is critical. As mayor of Ogden and our former government, selection and appointment of this leader is one of the most important responsibilities I have accepted. While the appointment of new police chief is under my purview, the long and important process of selecting our new chief has produced who I and many others know to be the best credentialed and successful leader to guide the Ogden Police Department into the future. When we were identifying key attributes for our new police chief and going through the process of selecting him, there were several critical areas of consideration. Among those items were education, experience, communication skills, oh, no, I just lost my light, and extensive training and knowledge of police operations, especially in the Ogden community. Today, I'm very pleased to present, per your advice and consent, my appointment of Eric Young to serve as the Ogden City Police Chief. Chief Young is a highly qualified and experienced law enforcement professional with a long history in law enforcement in Ogden City, which I think is critical. In his 27-year career with Ogden City Police Department, Chief Young has consistently excelled in his profession, receiving awards for valor, advancing in leadership roles. During his tenure with executive leadership, Chief Young was instrumental in instituting the Ogden Area Tactical Analysis Center, which has garnered national attention and is looked to by many institutions as the gold standard in crime prevention. Chief Young was also a key leader in the successful planning and execution of Project Safe Neighborhoods, which was recently recognized by the U.S. Attorney General's Office for its tremendous success. That's one of only six cities in the entire nation that were recognized for that. Chief Young has not limited his preparation to on-the-job training. Rather, he has actively pursued postgraduate education and elite national training to ensure he is well-versed in modern police practices and operating procedures employed by the most sophisticated law enforcement agencies in our nation. In addition to his bachelor's degree earned at Weber State, he's earned a master's degree in business and has graduated from the Federal Bureau of Investigations National Academy, which only 1% of those people in this profession graduate from. He was selected to the inaugural International Association of Police Chiefs Institute of Leadership on Juvenile Justice. Chief Young is cited as a co-author on a study of disproportionate minority contact, which was presented at multiple international conferences. I think it's worth saying, a national job search may have yielded another candidate with training and years of service similar to Chief Young, but nowhere could we have found a candidate with all of those qualifications, who also possesses Chief Young's knowledge and understanding of OPD and Ogden City, and who has contacts with many of the community organizations, leaders, and stakeholders with whom Chief Young has forged relationships with during his many years of service. I think it's important to reiterate that one of the things we've heard in the last year is that relationships in the community between our police department and the community are critical, and bringing someone in from the outside, I don't think would have met that standard. He truly understands our greatest strengths and greatest challenges and is natural fit to ensure effective continuity of operations. Serving as deputy chief of police for nine years, Chief Young has played a key role in each of OPD's recent successes to make this community safe. Over the last four years, Ogden has experienced a 34% decrease in Part I crime, 27% of that specific to violent crime reduction. Ogden City residents will benefit from a police chief who understands exactly how those successes were obtained so that he can continue those successes and reach for more, all for the benefit of Ogden City residents. Choosing a leader from OPD's ranks also benefits the city by demonstrating to our officers that we value our employees and are committed to providing career paths for them to excel and progress within the department. This is especially critical in these times when recruitment and retention of police officers is an all-time low nationwide. I personally have been watching Chief Young very carefully during the recent years to gauge his potential as chief. This has been a four-year extended job interview, although he may not have known it. Here's what I've concluded during that extended interview. Chief Young is smart, he is hardworking and dependable, he follows through on details while managing a tremendous workload, he's a great communicator, he's cool under pressure, and has a knack for de-escalating stressful encounters. Chief Young is an effective problem solver and an insightful planner. He is an excellent leader and leads by example. Chief Young is experienced and he is passionate about Ogden City. I am absolutely confident that Chief Young is the right leader for Ogden Police Department at this time. I highly recommend him to the city council as an exceptionally qualified appointee that merits your vote of approval. So thank you very much, and thank you for Eric, whoa, lost my lights again, for your consideration. And I'm honored to bring him forward, and I'm gonna go turn my light on. So thank you very much. You have any questions for me?
Looks like you said it all.
Yeah, if not, I'll yield the floor, and you guys are welcome to have a conversation. But we really do appreciate Chief Young and everything that he has done here. And it's absolutely an honor to forward him to your advice and consideration.
Great, thank you, Mayor. And now, it's our opportunity to have discussion amongst ourselves. We've also decided to take some public input on this. And we can have discussion now or do have some public input and then have discussion later. I'm open to your suggestions, council.
I'd say let's hear from the public, and then that'll help us inform our questions, I think.
Sounds great. Okay, so if we have Brandon Garside here, if he could just kind of explain how to do the public comment portion and how they would become eligible for that, and then we can start the public comment process.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. This is actually Eric. I'm running the meeting for Brandon tonight.
Perfect, thank you.
For those of you who want to provide or participate and provide public input on this item, you must be joining us via Zoom. You can raise your hand by using the raise hand feature in the bottom of your Zoom application. And for those of you joining us via telephone, you can raise your hand by dialing *9. And please remember to limit your comments to three minutes and state your name for the record.
Great, thanks, Eric. Okay. Now, this is my disclaimer. This is my first time taking public comment. Do I see on there where they've raised their hand, Eric?
Yeah, so we have some hands raised. Kathy Darby, the time is now yours. Please state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
Perfect, thank you.
Hi folks, it's Kathy Darby. The mayor just used a lot of my words, actually. I just wanted to let you all know that I am fully behind Eric. And I came on tonight just to let you know that my connection to Eric has been with charity organizations and community service projects. And I, you know, have a lot of the same feelings that the mayor does in things like, you know, he really stays cool under pressure, he's calm, he has common sense, he's knowledgeable, he has a great track record, his experience, his education. I'm just really proud to know him. I'm proud to have worked in the same boards with him and been a partner in projects. I've seen what he does for other people. He's quiet about it. He doesn't tout himself like ever. But he really, he really has the whole package for this position. I think he's a perfect example to all the officers in the city, and the young ones especially. And he manages, you know, operations. I've seen him work with the budget. I mean, literally, just a great guy for the position, and I just hope that everybody's as happy as I am that he's being promoted, and we'll sustain him tonight.
Thank you, Kathy.
Take Chief Carl Moreno. The time is now yours. We state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi, I'm Chief Carl Moreno. I'm the police chief in Roy. I'm a longtime, was a longtime resident of Ogden. I was born and raised, lived on West Side on D Avenue, very familiar with the community, graduated from Weber State as well. And taking my career back to the very beginning, I was in Ogden City Police Reserve before my career took me south, all the way to Salt Lake, and then back to Roy. I've known Eric now for the six years that I've been chief in Roy. And the thing that I've found is much what the mayor and Kathy and others have said about Eric. Excuse me. He's an individual that, from those of us in the county, you know, law enforcement works pretty closely together, and we interact a lot. We help support each other a lot. Eric's one of those guys that I learned very quickly when I came up here and became chief, that he's one you can count on, he's one that is honest, is straightforward, speaks his mind, has a great decision-making process, just an outstanding example of what I would want as a police officer to work with. I've also got to know him from going to various chiefs conferences, where we've been educated in new areas as we've gone to these conferences, but it also gave me a chance to see him in the evenings and have side chats with him and get to know him more on a personal level. And I just think he's a great guy. For somebody who grew up in Ogden, who knows the community, grew up on the West Side, if it were up to me, Eric's the one I would pick. I can't, I agree with the mayor. I think if you did a nationwide search, you wouldn't find anybody who would be more suited to serve Ogden. And I think this is a great choice, and I just want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief Moreno.
Adrian Andrews.
I was gonna say, hey, Eric, I just figured out how to see who's raising their hands. So if you want, I can go ahead and call on these individuals and take over from here if you want.
Yeah, whatever, I'm happy to do it as well, whatever works best for you.
Okay, so yeah, it looks like Adrian Andrews is next with her hand raised.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me a moment to be here tonight with all of you. Thank you, council, for the work that you do coming together regularly to observe the needs and functions of the city, mayor, and other leaders here today. I have a question and a comment, and my question will go first, which is, Mayor, did you reach out to the Diversity Commission or other community bodies before making your selection? Mayor, did you reach out to the Diversity Commission or other community bodies before making your selection? And my, the reason I pose that question is because I think that Chief-elect Young is outstanding and definitely his credentials indicate that he is far and above the typical candidate that you're going to find. But I find it disheartening that we did not give him a chance to connect with the community and the organizations in our community to share that with them, for those who don't know or don't have the relationship. And unfortunately, I think that also undermines the relationship not only to groups like the Diversity Commission, but to our community bodies who have been establishing and developing new and improved relationships between the city and themselves and our larger community. And so I think that for me, that feels very unfortunate because it was a good opportunity for us to move forward together. And I think that we very much would have come to the same conclusion. But it would have been a conclusion that involved the community in which he will serve and that would have involved the leadership of community groups and organizations that really seek to partner with the city rather than be informed by the city after the fact. So, please let me congratulate Chief Young, who I have been able to work with and who is a phenomenal individual and who I look forward to working with moving forward. But I do want to indicate to city leadership that I'm a little bit heartbroken because I've spent many, many years trying to work to develop those relationships between myself and the city and the community in the city and the university in the city. And so it feels to me a little bit like we've been disregarded in the process, even though I am very excited for Chief Young to begin his work. Thank you for this time.
Thank you Adrian. Okay. It looks like, and I hope I say this correctly, Ken Freymuth is next with his hand raised, the time is now yours.
Hi, it's Ann Freymuth. And can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Our Zoom is under Ken's name. I have had the pleasure of knowing and working with Eric about 20 years. He was a rather new, young detective when I was the director of the Children's Justice Center. Eric was one of my favorite and one of my best detectives ever. He, his greatest skill, I believe, is listening. He listens to victims, he listens to other people's opinions when you're staffing cases. I always knew and that he would go somewhere, that he would be great because he was a great part of the team, because there's always a team in child abuse cases, which are extremely volatile at times and, and always very sensitive. But Eric was always a great member of the team. He always kept his cool, if you want to say it, and he always looked at every opportunity to learn more or go to trainings that were provided. So I am pleased, I am elated to think that we're gonna have someone that I've watched for the last 20 years evolve into one of the most professional policemen I've ever known. So I give him my greatest support. I am totally pleased with your choice and best wishes for Ogden. I think someone who knows our, our city, someone who cares about our citizens is the person we want here. So, complete support for Eric. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
We have one minute left, so this is Ken.
Okay.
Yes, we're done.
Nope, well, go ahead.
Well, all I was gonna say is I'm a retired Army Military Police Officer career and also used to be the head of security for two rocket plants here in this area at Promontory and Magnus. So, I'm well aware of what Ogden Police do. And I also like the comment that the mayor made that Eric is known for his ability to de-escalate. In my career, I always had a motto from my department that said, "When we get on the scene, things get better, not worse." And it's a leader with the skills and the training and the interest that Eric has shown in my contacts with him, that events like shop with a cop and so forth, I believe he's the right man for this job and I wish him well.
Thank you. Okay, I believe David Timmerman is next with his hand raised. Go ahead David, the time is yours.
Can you hear me now? Yes. Okay, thank you. Yes, first of all, I'd like to thank all the comments so far and start by saying that my commentary has nothing really against the selection by the mayor of, of Chief Young. I don't have anything personal against the man, he seems to be a gentleman and obviously has the experience and bona fides to fill the position. My objection is to the process. And I guess, first of all, one of my questions for the City Council would be, what happens if you do not approve the mayor's selection? And of course, you can answer that when I'm through, but, so I have a question about that. The other thing is, why is there no community involvement in this process? Would it be possible to make Chief Young the interim chief until we have time to obtain some additional public input or participation? The, the other question that I had and more of a proposal to the City Council would be, why don't we have a, an existing committee possibly titled the Police and Criminal Justice Reform Committee? I would propose that we, I think that over and try to get participation in a group like that which could assist the mayor in his search. In the mayor's remarks regarding his process and the reason he selected Chief Young, he indicated that "we," he used the word "we" a lot when he talked about making his decision. And like other people who've raised the same question, my question is, when you say "we," who assisted you in this? I do think one of our biggest problems involving the management of the mayor's office is "we." Clarity, it feels like there's a, a lack of transparency there. And so, yeah, giving us more information is better than none. And then finally, I would like to say thanks to a good friend and former coworker of mine, the, the chief of the Roy Police, Carl Moreno. Good to hear from you Carl. And, and of course, to all the Ogden officers, of course, we all appreciate you for your service. It is an impossible job, but you guys do it and you continue to do it every day. And we are appreciative of that. But please, take my recommendation and let us know what we can do to form a committee which would assist the police and help in protecting them as well as reaching out to the community who, who needs it so much. Thank you.
Thank you David.
Thank you.
And next up is Jason Thompson. Go ahead Jason, the time is now yours.
Thank you. It's a privilege to be here this evening. Thank you, City Council for all that you do and Mayor Caldwell. I'm here to show my support for Chief Young. I think it's, he's the perfect man for the job. I think with everything else that's been said, I echo that. And most importantly, in my experience with working with Eric and the community and serving on boards with him, is really just the impeccable character that he has. If there's anyone that would embody the values and character of Ogden, I think Eric's one of those. And I also feel that if you cast the net wide, you would, you wouldn't find anyone better that's more suited to take on this role, moving Ogden City forward. And I urge the City Council to approve the mayor's recommendation and I'm excited for Chief Young and what he'll do to move in advance our efforts in the city forward. Thank you.
Thank you Jason. Next up is James Ebert. Go ahead, Mr. Ebert, your time, the time is now yours.
I have had a great opportunity to work alongside Chief Young for the past 26, 27 years in various capacities, whether it was law enforcement where I retired out or four years in political service or the last couple of years in nonprofits. I believe that Mayor Caldwell really outlined his impeccable qualifications. And so I think what I will just touch base on really quickly is the personal aspects that I've seen in Chief Young. I believe he's very thoughtful, something that sometimes is hard to do when you're in positions of leadership is to take the time to be kind. And I've seen him be extremely kind. I think he understands others' perspectives. And I believe, maybe a little bit to Adrian's concerns and even though there may be some initial concerns with maybe the process and that it has not reached out to certain groups, entities or organizations, he is an individual that can help build and strengthen those. There may be some concerns about a process, so to speak, but if in the end your outcome is impeccable and it's the very best outcome you can come to, I think the process can be evaluated, but I don't think the process should be something then that is reevaluated and started all over again. Because I believe Chief Young has been evaluated for the last four years, if not the last 10 years. And you can start a whole process to interview people, but you will not have the insight that you have presently with, with Chief Young. So, I cannot express my support of Chief Young. When I heard that Chief Watt was retiring, I crossed my fingers that that's the direction that were, that Ogden was going to go, because I believe so strongly in his leadership. But as strongly as I believe in his leadership and his ability to do law enforcement component, it's his kindness, his thoughtful attitude, and it's his ability to reach out and heal wounds and build partnerships. So, I wholeheartedly support him and I appreciate the time and opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you. Hey James, can I get you just to state your name for the record, please?
You betcha, James Ebert, E-B-E-R-T.
Great, thank you so much. Okay. Next up is Eric Baumann. Go ahead, Mr. Baumann, the time is now yours.
Well, thank you so much for having me tonight. My name is Eric Baumann, I'm a retired deputy chief of the Ogden Fire Department. And I've had the opportunity and the honor to serve for the last over 25 years with Chief Young. We've served on many committees together, worked on many projects together, and I'm really proud of the work we were able to do together. Chief Young is a person of integrity, commitment, dedication, he's kind, many have said that tonight. He's thoughtful and he's shown exceptional leadership through his career. More than anything, he's dedicated to his community. His vast background in law enforcement allows him to fully understand the needs of our community. He's solution-based, collaborative, and understands the values of partnerships. And in my opinion, is 100% the right individual for this position. He'll bring the highest degree of honor to this position. And so, I fully support the decision to move forward. And thank you again for having me tonight.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Malik Diallo. Go ahead, Malik, the time is now yours.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, congratulations to Eric and I'm sure he's a nice man to those who know him and he has the credentials to be a chief. But there must be a selection process in place when choosing the new chief of police for Ogden, point blank. Although this is not an elected position, there should have been some type of community feedback in place to collect data on what type of police chief we want in our city. We had no voice in the matter. The City Council, Diversity Commission, and local organizations should have had a voice in the selection process. We want a chief who has vision of rebuilding the broken bridges that exist between Ogden City Police and communities of color. This effort was a failure by the last chief. We want a chief who has vision. We want a chief whose community's cries for police reform don't continue to fall on deaf ears. We want a chief who's actually gonna be proactive in beefing up the diversity of our police department. An outsider, even a woman or a person of color, anyone who will increase the diversity of OPD. There's not one black officer. We need new vetting processes and policies in place to ensure that not a single member of our police department are members of hard-right extremist websites such as Parler, as our previous chief was. These websites are the method of communication that have been used by domestic terrorists in an attempt to commit an insurgency against our democratic republic. Ogden must be reassured that we never have a chief or an officer that believes in any type of QAnon conspiracy theories or holds extremist views. These include conspiracy theories such as the election being stolen or blaming Black Lives Matter or Antifa for leading an insurgency into the Capitol, which have been disproven already. We are now hearing on national news how these very same conspiracy theories spread by Donald Trump have infiltrated the minds of our law enforcement nationwide. There are now stories confirming that the, there are now stories confirming the involvement of the Capitol Police all the way down to local law enforcement agencies participating in the attempted insurgency. What steps are Ogden City taking to ensure that our department has not been infiltrated by these extremist ideologies that are responsible for the civil unrest in our nation and that our city will be safe between now and the 20th? Last but not least, there must be an approval process for Young's appointment. That's all I have to say.
Thank you Malik.
You're welcome.
Next, to have his hand raised, is Dee Smith. Go ahead, Dee Smith, the time is now yours.
Good evening. My name is Dee Smith. I'm a deputy Weaver County attorney. I prosecute many of the cases that Ogden City Police Department investigate. And I just wanna lend my support to Chief Young. I've known Chief Young for many years. I've observed him as he's come up through the ranks of the Ogden Police Department. He's been a patrol officer, he's been a community resource officer, a detective, a sergeant, a lieutenant, and a deputy chief. Through that process, he's prepared himself to lead this department. And I can tell you that he's a man of integrity, he's not somebody that will ever embarrass this department. Ogden's a unique community and the Ogden Police Department is a unique department. And Chief Young understands both the department and the community and he is the right person to lead the department at this time. So I would just, again, lend my voice and support him and let the council know I was very happy, very excited when I heard that Mayor Caldwell had appointed Chief Young. That's really all I have. Thank you.
Thank you Dee. Next up is Walker. So, go ahead Walker, the time is now yours.
Hi, I am Rachel Walker. I am a detective with the Police Department and I'm also the president of our Police Benefits Association. As the president, I hear a lot of input from officers, the good and the bad. Chief Young not only is open to that advice, but also openly solicits the input from officers and from our association. Chief Young has our complete confidence as a chief. He's smart and progressive and hardworking. I've had the pleasure of working with him in good times and in times of crisis. And especially in those times of crisis, I've seen what you would ultimately expect in a chief, to be our leader and to be somebody that we can look up to. So I just want to leave it at that and thank you for allowing my input.
Thank you Rachel. Okay. Next up, we have John Thomas. Go ahead John, the time is now yours.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for giving me a couple of minutes to speak. My name is John Thomas. I'm the vice president of the Weaver Fraternal Order of Police. Our organization represents all of the law enforcement members in Weaver County. Our organization represents all of the law enforcement members in Weaver County, as well as Morgan County. And on behalf of our organization, we totally support the appointment of Chief Eric Young to be the next police chief of Ogden City. He would be a great chief, good selection. The men and women of Ogden are very supportive of his appointment, and we will continue to work hard to make Ogden City the best city in this state. Myself, on a personal note, I can speak to a comment that was made earlier about diversity within the department. I know firsthand that Chief Young is strongly behind getting diversity, hiring brown, black, white, Latino, whatever you want. He strongly supports that, and he's working hard to get a recruitment of minority officers to Ogden City. Chief Young is a great candidate, and our organization totally is in support of this, and we hope that the City Council and the mayor does appoint him to this position. I want to thank you for giving me a couple of minutes to talk. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay. Next up is Taylor Knuth. Go ahead, Taylor. The time is now yours.
Awesome. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. My name's Taylor Knuth, and I'm here tonight to talk about the process and not the product of this item. It's fairly unfortunate that we're here to celebrate the nomination of an incredibly qualified chief-elect Young, and I can't help but echo Adrian's sentiments of feeling a little heartbroken about the lack of consideration paid to those of us who have been engaged with this city for years to help create an Ogden where everyone belongs. Belonging can obviously be a complicated idea, but what I do know about belonging is that trust-building is a critical element of this idea, and at any step along this process, it can be ruined in a matter of moments. Trust has been built over the last several months with the police department, and within the last several years with our diverse communities, is thrown out the door when a major life-altering decision for many in our community is decided behind closed doors without meaningful engagement with our community. As someone engaged in volunteer service myself, unpaid for the city, I'm asking today that the City Council and the city administration thoughtfully consider the ways in which you engage with the dozens of individuals who spend countless hours in service of our community and of our city government, whether that means belonging to the Ogden Diversity Commission, the Planning Commission, or the Sustainability Committee. I ask the City Council to consider if they would accept a rezone or a land use change without Planning Commission's careful and thoughtful review. For me, that same standard of engagement for public servants, who more often than not do this work for free, I'll reiterate that again, should apply to every major decision which comes before this administration and this council, and when it's not, I'd ask why you, as City Council members, aren't questioning these items the same way you do with the Planning Commission. Beyond the lack of engagement with these boards and commissions, there was no engagement with the community at large in this planning decision, or in, sorry, in this decision to nominate a chief-elect Young. This reflects a general lack of understanding to the national rhetoric with regards to the equitable and just policing in our communities, especially with our communities where historically marginalized individuals represent the majority of the population, which is true of our wonderful Ogden City. The national standard for hiring chiefs of police, as I understand it, includes a hiring committee, documented evaluations, and public-facing presentations, and authentic engagement with community members and city councils. Again, I'll reiterate the message I opened with. This is about the process and not the product. I'll close with the same invitation I make to you all almost every time I speak with you. I invite both the City Council and the city administration to thoughtfully, consistently, and authentically engage with those in service to you. Thank you, and have a really great night.
Thank you, Taylor. Next up is Susan Daly. Suzanne Daly. Sorry if I said that wrong. Go ahead, Suzanne. The time is now yours.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to congratulate Eric Young on his new position as Ogden's chief of police. In a recent conversation with him, I've had... I've come to understand and appreciate his emphasis on officer accountability, and I think that will lead to enhancing transparency. This is encouraging, and I look forward to continuing the conversations we've had that we started with Chief Watt and the mayor under the Ogden Community Coalition. With that said, and with absolutely no disrespect to Chief Young, I was also disappointed in the process, as many other people have stated tonight. It seems to have been conducted in a vacuum. My knowledge... To my knowledge, no one sought the insight of the Ogden Community Coalition working on police reform, the Diversity Commission, the Ogden and ACP, or even the City Council. While overlooking these important voices may have helped to expedite the decision, it does leave us reconsidering our relevance. Whether elected, appointed, or simply concerned citizens, we represent communities heavily impacted by law enforcement. It's quite possible that after a broader search and evaluating more candidates, we may have all settled on Eric Young as the best candidate. However, an open conversation would have brought light to concerns that would have only helped candidates understand the community they would be serving. It was a lost opportunity, and may leave our new chief with more friction than trust when directing our public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Angel Castillo. The time is now yours.
Good evening. Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. I'd like to start out with a story that we all know very well. Was I cut off? The hand thing just came up for muting.
Yeah. I can hear you. I can hear you, though.
Okay. Dr. Mortensen, it was almost a foregone conclusion as being selected as president of Weaver State University because Dr. Mortensen is Dr. Mortensen, and he's awesome. And he spent an incredible amount of time in the institution and well-connected to the community, but Weaver State still went through the selection process. They reached out to find the most qualified candidates they could seek across the nation, and then they went through a process which clearly established what community expectations would be and milestones, and what the culture would be like. And that actual process itself helped Dr. Mortensen understand what was going to be expected of him, and of course, he was selected. And I have no problem with Chief Young, but I have a problem with this process. It seems very disingenuous that you're going to set up a diversity commission and not seek out to them, that you have a City Council that you didn't ask or inform about who you might be thinking. And as Suzy Daly had pointed out, such a missed opportunity to connect Chief Young to the community so that they could know him, that they could hear all the good things that people who know him personally have said about him, because I'm sure they're all true. And this is not at all about Chief Young. This is about the process and the fact that the community wasn't involved. And if you want to make sure that you're going to build the bridge of trust that is very fragile right now with the national conversation, we need to involve our community so that they can learn and show up for the leaders of our police force so that we can build those bridges of trust. And I think it's imperative that officers be involved in a selection committee. They should be able to connect to their leader, know who he or she, what they're about, and to also ask the hard questions and understand what kind of culture that person is going to dismantle, or keep, or change. The biggest company in the world, Apple, whenever they hire anybody, before part of the process is talking to people that you'll be working for, and the part of their process as well is if any single person on a team that you're going to work for doesn't like you, you don't get hired. And that happens from Apple all the way to Whole Foods, to other small businesses. It's important that we be connected and engaged, and we need to have transparency in a process. And I'm perfectly willing for Chief Young to go through a process and be the stellar candidate, be the standout among everybody else that, yes, this is our chief, but we deserve that process. And I ask the City Council to please change the laws to make this happen, because it is within your purview, and this is such a position of power, and it's so important. Thank you.
Thanks, Angel. It looks like Heath Sato is next. Go ahead, Heath. The time is now yours.
Hi. Heath Sato, Ogden resident. It rhymes with auto. Sato.
I'll make a note. Thanks, Heath.
No problem. First off, congratulations to Eric Young on his selection, and from what I've heard, he's very qualified for the job. Quite happy to hear someone comment that is good at de-escalation. More of that at the top of the force will be more than welcome. And I found Mr. Thomas's comments regarding future hiring practices that may diversify our force more heartening. That is desperately needed. And while I'm sure the new chief will be very dedicated and knows the city well, I was more than a bit disturbed to hear the mayor say tonight that he rejected the idea of even looking outside our existing force to be 100% certain he was, in fact, the best choice. An insider's not automatically always the best choice for any role, and there's just no way of knowing that without even looking. This was frankly disturbing to hear. The position is far too important to be lazy about the selection. In regards to Mr. Timmerman's comment about more information being better, I was elated to see Councilmember Nadolski addressing the need for better transparency in future police chief selections during the work session today. I was cheering when I heard that. We need more transparency and communication in so many areas. Thank you.
Thanks, Heath. I'm sorry about that. I will make a note and do better.
No problem.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next up, it looks like we have Margaret Rose. Go ahead, Margaret. The time is now yours.
Thank you, and thanks to the City Council. Congratulations to Eric Young tonight. He is indeed a fine selection, as I think everyone here has already acknowledged. Many people here have spoken with Eric, about Eric, and they've known him for 15, 20, 25 years. I've known Eric for less than two years. And I have a pretty good gut instinct, but what I've come to find from working with Eric in my role, and he is a board member for our nonprofit, is that he's been extremely thoughtful, and he's a terrific problem solver. And one of the things that I've found that really sets Eric apart is that he cares deeply about vulnerable populations. And we work with an extremely vulnerable population. He and the police force have been absolutely responsive. They have been incredibly quick and helpful, and when we've had things that we've had to talk through that haven't been easy, they've listened, and I think that's a true testament to leadership, and I give a tremendous amount of credit to Eric for just the role, the way in which his officers sort of conduct themselves, and the experience that we've had with them. They've fully engaged in our lethality assessment protocol training, which has saved lives, and I have full confidence that he'll lead a department. I also have full faith that, as many of us are doing in trying to diversify our staffs and our workforce, that that's a charge that Eric understands and that he will follow through on, and I have full confidence that he recognizes that that's a really, really important aspect to the work that our police forces need right now nationwide. So thank you for this time, for the opportunity to speak, and congratulations to Eric, and congratulations to the mayor. I think you've made an exceptional choice.
Thank you, Margaret. Okay. Next up, we have Jeff Schneider. Go ahead, Jeff. The time is now yours.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I can, yes. Thank you.
Okay. I've known Chief Young for 20-plus years, on a personal and professional level. I know him to be a man of his word, a man of honor, and a man who has dedicated and sacrificed a lot of his life to the city of Ogden, as well as its residents. So I support him in his role. I can also understand as a citizen of Ogden in the past that more time to choose and have conversations is always a good thing. However, I do think it's a fallacy to assume that Chief Young does not represent the qualities simply because the process may not be exactly what it could be. There are potential for missed opportunities, of course, but I believe if we were to take into account the national rhetoric which has been mentioned, diversity does not equal success across the country, as far as there have been difficulties for all policemen or police people, policewomen across the country, regardless of their background. It is a tough position, and that position needs someone who understands it and who has worked it and who can support the individuals, which I believe Chief Young can. I also believe that an opportunity to assume that he can't carry on or bring in diversity would also be a fallacy. I've known him for years and known him to be an honorable man when it comes to... I've never heard anything from him that is inappropriate in that light, and I know that he would be open to having those conversations with all people that live in Ogden, because we do have a wonderful community that way. And then finally, in my final minute, one of the respondents, and I felt to write down his name, I believe it was very early on, mentioned making police, or Chief Young, an interim chief until a selection process could go through. There are several factors that could affect the ability to get a good chief: cost, availability, training, many factors. Why not choose from the community locally an officer to be an assistant chief, to train with Chief Young, to learn from him, and potentially be prepared for that situation? Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay. Next up, we have Ryan Arben. Go ahead, Ryan. The time is now yours.
Thank you. This is Ryan Arben, sheriff of Weaver County. I just wanted to express my appreciation for Mayor Caldwell and the council for allowing me to have this time to say a few words about Chief Young. Since the time I've been a sheriff, I've had many interactions with Chief Young, and he has just performed brilliantly. He's a true man with vision and goals. I believe he's the right person to take Ogden City in the direction that the city wants to move in. I also want to mention something I don't think I've heard tonight, but is the importance of the partnerships that the other law enforcement agencies have with Ogden and so forth. These are so crucial, so important. We need each other, and he fully supports Ogden City Police Department. And I just want to close it. I fully support Chief Young, and just want to say good luck. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have Betty Sawyer. Go ahead, Betty. The time is now yours.
Good evening, and thank you again for the opportunity to share tonight. I'd like to echo the sentiments of Ms. Andrews and Mr. Knuth and others about this not being about the person, but the process. I congratulate on behalf of the Ogden NAACP, Chief Young, Chief-elect Young, for this opportunity to serve. I know he spent his entire career working to get to this place, but unfortunately, the process is important, because process and policies go hand in hand. And while Chief Young definitely could be the best qualified for this position, we did not have the opportunity to enter or engage in that conversation. As a member of the Ogden University Commission, I chair our functional committee on police community engagement, and have been working for the past several months with the mayor... community engagement and have been working for the past several months with the mayor and police chief to address issues around community policing and engagement for our ethnic communities. This is disheartening, that something this important. And Mayor Caldwell, you said in your remarks that this is the most important appointment that you get to make, and it impacts all of us. And the fact that all of us were not included in the process unfortunately taints this whole evening that should be more of a celebration. Just last week, you all signed on to the compact for racial equity, diversity, and inclusion, and affirmed some basic principles in that. One of the things you said was we pledge to advance behavior on an individual business and government level that will establish priorities and laws that create equal opportunity and access for all. You go on to state the importance of listening and learning from each other. You go on to state the importance of public policies and listening, community engagement, and that this is not a movement, not a moment, but a movement. And what we've seen now deeply concerns us, and not just for this appointment. If we're allowed to move forward without any kind of input from those most deeply and directly involved or impacted, then we can do that on any senior level position. And the last time I looked at the HR reports from Ogden City, we are lacking diversity, ethnic and racial diversity among our ranks. So if we can just appoint people without an open process, then Ogden will continue to look the same, 99% white or 93% white leadership in our city that does not speak to a city that's over 50% people of color. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Next, we have Monica Williams. Go ahead, Monica. The time is now yours.
Hi, my name is Monica Williams. I'm a professor at Weber State in the Department of Criminal Justice, and I wanted to chime in at the risk of sounding like a broken record to echo pretty much all the sentiments that have been stated so far in terms of the process. So just a little bit of background, I've worked with Eric on a few different research projects and had a phenomenal experience working with him. Pretty much everything everyone else has said about thoughtfulness and, you know, willingness to engage and all of that is true of Eric. So again, just like other people have said, this is not about Eric as a potential next chief. In terms of the process of hiring, I've actually done research on and written a book kind of on a similar topic of how communities respond to these kinds of decisions from the top. And the main thing, the most important thing I've found is that you have to give people a voice. So, and not only because then it makes people feel like they have input, but also because it provides a really good opportunity for communities and especially different factions of the communities to come together and analyze, you know, talk about and discuss what are the strengths and weaknesses, what are our values? So it can actually be a really important process to have different community groups come together in decisions like this to give people some power, you know, empower them to have a role in these decisions. So I echo everything everyone else has said, and I want to reiterate that, you know, in terms of experiences with Eric, I've, you know, I don't have any, well, I'll say I agree with everything everyone else has said, and he's consistently shown that he's interested in the data in terms of looking into these issues of disproportionate contact with minorities and social justice issues, and also that he's willing to take part in hard conversations. He took part in a deliberative democracy day on police use of force on a panel, and his responses are definitely thoughtful and definitely listened. So again, it's not about Eric as becoming a chief, but more about the process of hiring. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Okay, I believe that is all of the public comment. There were some questions raised, or some questions asked. I would ask the administration if they would like to answer any of those questions or address any of those questions, and then I would just open it up to comments from council members.
I would jump in as the person responsible for making this selection and just say, I've appreciated everybody's comments. We've written them all down. We've looked at that. This is something we've been working on for the last year. There are times when you can open it up and talk and debate things to death, and it doesn't do anybody any favors. We felt like Chief Young was so unique in this position that that was one of the responsibilities I took on, was to put forward who we thought was going to be the best to serve our community in the future. And I appreciate everybody that got on and talked about it. And some of the comments made about, let's have more community meetings and let's have more dialogue with people. I think Chief Young's been willing to do that, and we're certainly willing to do that. That's why we set up those, all of those committees in the first place, and we want to hear from that. And he's been willing to engage in that dialogue. And so we didn't try to usurp the community, we didn't try to end run anyone, we just feel like he is a really good choice, and I stand by that decision. So thank you, everyone, for getting involved and giving your comments. We've listened to them, we've written them down, and I know, well, hopefully Chief Young is listening to all that. I know he does. It was announced earlier, he's very good at that, and we look forward to working with you all.
Chair, may I say something?
Yes, please.
I mean, I too appreciate everybody calling in. I've had wonderful experiences working with Chief Young as well. I think that something that's really hitting me as I take notes and kind of listen to the conversation is a feeling that I had when we were discussing this amongst ourselves, and I don't know, I didn't know how to articulate it at that time. But I think I do have a great sense of sadness and loss for Eric in that this should be a wonderful celebration for him, and just kind of repeating what some other people said. But I do feel just really pained that we're coming into a situation where there are certain members of the community and boards and bodies that work for us that feel, whether they're relevant, you know, I heard this question, you know, is their opinion or advice even relevant to these conversations? Do we trust the community to come together around these kinds of decisions together? And that's something I think that I have also heard just around other kinds of things that we're doing in the administration around transparency is like, I really do believe that we can trust the community to understand complex issues and to come together and to have conversations that might be challenging. But we continue to undermine that trust and those relationships that we're trying to build. And I don't think that Chief Young has done that, right? And so I feel really bad. He's put in this situation where now he's walking in and he's behind stepping out into the community, saying, I'm going to take on this role to build trust, but I have to make up for the way that we've gone about choosing me. And he had no say about that. You know, he had no ability to make those kinds of decisions. He's just put in the position where he really wants this job and he wants to do a good job. And so I guess I just wanted to articulate that, that I finally have the word for it, and it's a great sadness and loss that we've had to kind of come to this point.
Can I add to Councilmember Tiberka's comments?
Yes, please.
I've been right, I have a ton of notes, so excuse me if I'm not the most articulate, but I'll start with my own sense of sadness. The saddest moment I had in this process was when I called a dear friend to ask about her feedback and her opinion on this selection and this process. She actually began to tear up, and that was when I first recognized the hurt that this process has caused people that I love and that we all love. I know we do. I know we do. And I guarantee you, Eric Young loves this person just as much. Just like everybody else has said, none of this is Eric Young's to own. Eric Young is a good man who is stepping up and is wants to lead, wants to serve, just like he always has his entire career. He's a man of honor and integrity from everyone I've ever known and from every or ever heard from and from every interaction that I've ever had with him. I've talked to a lot of people, some of whom spoke tonight, some of whom didn't. Everybody that I talked to praised Eric Young. And so that's something that we can all agree on tonight, and there does seem to be some agreement that the process needs to be improved, and I am in full support of that. I think that we missed an opportunity to unite our community in this process, in the celebration, really, in a time where unity is really fleeting in our nation. And if there's ever a time or ever a place where we own the outcome, it's in Ogden, and I really truly feel that we have to do our best to do better. So I think it's also really timely that we are considering this item just after we consider the previous. It's all fine and dandy when we consider resolutions and that we, you know, we're happy and we cheer along, that we make appointments to commissions, that we create commissions, and that we sign on to resolutions. But those resolutions and those commissions are committed to action, and I do hope that after we consider action for a good man tonight, a good, humble public servant in Eric Young, who deserves our support in my opinion, that we will take action consistent with the spirit of service that Dr. King and those who have spoken to us tonight have encouraged us to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, if I could say something just real quick? You know, one of the things as we started out, and I want to make sure that people understand that our form of government sometimes is really frustrating, and it's frustrating because of the lane that we have to stay in and the lane that the mayor gets to be in. And we don't always get to dictate the process. We don't get to dictate what the mayor and administration wanted to do and how they wanted to go about this. And I just want to say that, you know, I hope that, following on Councilmember Nadolski's comments, that we are able to change the process to reflect what we can actually control. And so I just hope that we will be able to do that. But we also know that it's very frustrating just because of our form of government as well. So I just wanted to make sure that people understand that we might not have the ability to change anything as far as what the administration may or may want, may or may not want to
Thank you. If there's no other comments right now, I think it would be appropriate to let...
I have another comment, Chair. So number one, I'd like to unite with everyone that spoke tonight in congratulating of Chief I have to say that I'm very happy about the appointment. And, you know, I haven't had the honor to work as long or as many years as other people have with Chief Young, but I have had my share of interactions. And I actually worked with him before I became a council member. And I had the opportunity to do some work with him when Chief Ashman was still here. And Chief Young was very supportive and instrumental in helping me organize conversations with members of the Hispanic community. And we had a, we actually had a lunch together. LUPAC donated lunch for many police officers, and we met at the police department, and we had lunch with the police officers, and we had some really good conversations. So that, you know, that was, and Chief Young has always been open to continuing these conversations and these discussions every time I've spoken with him about anything regarding to these things. So I echo the comments of everyone about the wonderful men we have here. And I also echo the comments about the process. And unlike my colleagues, Mr. Nadolski and my colleague Tiberka, I'm not sad, I'm happy because we're here talking about it. And because we are determined to speak up about what we believe should be the right way to approach these appointments. Because in my mind, I won't even mention the appointment of Chief Young. I will mention previous appointments and future appointments. That's where we need to focus. And as has been said, I don't have to repeat everything that our community members have We need to allow the community to take part in these very important decisions that happen in our city. And the council does have purview in how we go about doing this. It is my view that we do, it's part of our oversight responsibilities. So I look forward to continuing these conversations. And again, Chief Young, congratulations for your appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lopez. If there's no other comments right now, I think it would be appropriate to have Eric Young address us or give him the opportunity to speak.
Chair, can I take a few minutes before he does that? There's been a lot of comments this evening, and I believe we've got the right man in the right place. I go back to what Vice Chair White said, and she mentioned that there are avenues that the administration has, and there are avenues that the council has. And we've asked in our work session that our staff go ahead and try to develop a system by which we, as council members, know exactly what our avenue is. And that's important. We do have responsibility. The administration has the responsibility. I think, my opinion is that Chief Young will do those things that will unite the community. He will do those things that will bring the minority aspect into process. Because he's seen that, he's experienced it. What we need to do is with the minority community is to apply for this department. We don't get many minorities participating. And I would encourage them to sign up and go through that process. I don't deem it as a sad day. I think it's a happy day. That we have an individual with the credentials and the talent and the skills and the knowledge, foresight to still bring our community forward. I, this is the day that we need to support our new police chief 100%. And I support him. And I also would like to say thanks to Chief Watt for what he brought to the department. He brought some innovative techniques, and I appreciate the work that he's done. But now, this is the time that this department will take on a different characteristic. It will take on the characteristic of Chief Young, and I'm glad for that. And thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we would invite Eric Young to... Okay, we would invite Eric Young to speak if he would like to.
You're a mute chief.
Well, I've heard that a few times today. Or every day. So I, and this is, this is just humbling. I, to hear all those individuals get on and, and say those kind things and have the mayor, who's been such a phenomenal leader from the, the first time I met him in the middle of the night when our officers was, was shot and killed and several other officers were wounded and see the commitment he's had, this police department had him say those kind of things about me and have all of these council members say that. It's overwhelming. It's humbling. I have my, my family here with me and to be part of that. And I just, as much as I paid attention to all the compliments and those positive things are nice, but I just want everyone to know I, I listened very carefully to Adrian, to Taylor and to Betty, to all those members of the diversity commission, her feeling a little left out. And I, I just want them to know that I'm their chief and I'm, I'm here to be their chief. And I, and all of you know that I'm here to listen and to be part of this community as I have been. And I don't think they'll be disappointed in, in what I do going forward to have them engaged with this police department. We need everyone in this community engaged and involved and invested in making Ogden better and making this police department a police department they're all proud of, which I think they are. And if there's ours, that those out there that aren't, we're, I mean, ready to reach out and, and hear what they have to say. So I, I thank you. This is an amazing opportunity and it, it's an amazing responsibility. And that's the number one word that I'll, I'll close with. It's a responsibility and, and it's mine to bear and then I look forward to doing that.
Thank you, Eric. Okay.
Chair, are you?
Ready for a motion?
I would, yes, gladly.
I think I beat my, my colleague Ben Nadolski to the punch, so I'll let him go with it.
Oh, I, I appreciate that. I, it doesn't matter who makes the motion. What matters is the man that we make the motion for. And Eric Young, I, I truly genuinely, deep through my heart and within my soul, believe in you. And I believe in your character and your integrity. I'm so happy that your family is here tonight with you to see, to see what we're doing tonight. And that I truly look forward to watching you and, and joining you in that engagement with the community moving forward. And look forward to you being my chief as well. And it's with that that I make a motion that we accept the appointment of Eric Young as the new chief of police for Ogden City.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the appointment of Eric Young as the new police chief of Ogden City by Councilmember Nadolski and a second by Councilmember Hare. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nadolski?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
Aye.
Chair Blair?
Aye. Thank you. That passes. I, I believe we should clap and welcome Chief Young to Ogden City. I, I would like to take a minute and personally thank you and welcome you as our new police chief. When, when I received the packet and it had your name on there, I, I can honestly, honestly say my first emotion was, well, it's about time. I, I have known you, I'm on going on 12 years now. And, and I have had not a lot of interactions with you, but, but numerous interactions with you. And I have never once left any interaction with you and never thought at any moment that you weren't ever, you weren't qualified for this position. And I, I'm, I'm so happy and so excited that it's, that it's now, that it's taking place now. I, I truly believe that you are truly a leader in our community, an example in our community. And I, I appreciate the manner in which you, that you go about your duties, not only as a police officer, but now as a police chief. And so I, I am honored to be able to work with you, to stand side by side with you. And I'm, I'm honored to actually be able to, to assist you in any way I can. I, I, I thank you that you always count, that you always consider yourself our chief and our police force. And you always, you always say that you, you want to belong to a police force that we, that we can be proud of. And I, I know I speak for everyone when I say we are truly proud of, of you and all of our police officers and the job you all do to protect us and to do what you do for us every day. So I, I know it's been a long, a long night for you and I'm, your family's probably ready to go get ice cream or whatever. But I, I do hope that, that they did get to hear all those wonderful things said about you because they are genuine and, and everyone here believes that. And we, we, we wish you nothing but the best and we're, we're very thankful to have you as our new chief. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Officially Chief Young?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I kind of held back a little bit ago. There's a few things I would like to say. I think that perhaps are important that we hear tonight. If that'd be all right.
Please.
I, you know, there was, I, I've been watching the attending, the count, and it's covered just a little under 40. And I appreciate those people and, and that the, the comments that they gave us. They certainly, you know, those things certainly did need to be heard. I, I am a little sad tonight that we couldn't separate the two issues a little bit. And, and keep the little rain cloud that's, that's been over this thing tonight for another time. When, you know, I, I'm going to stick up for the mayor a little bit. I, I think he inherited this process. It's, it hasn't changed as long as I have known. You know, but on the council and even before. So I, I, to, to assume that he should have automatically known that a bunch of people wanted this process to be changed. I, when he had a candidate like Eric Young to forward for advice and consent, I, I just think maybe that's a little bit of a stretch. When I did hear that it was Eric Young, I, I feel like we've, you know, the people that talk to me want a strong police force and, and believe that we have a representative form of government that voted each of you council members and myself to represent them. And so my, my feelings at the time, when I, when I read about Eric Young being forwarded to us for advice and consent and approval, I thought I can, I can get behind that. I don't, there's not going to be any trouble for me at all giving my support for that approval. And I think that's what our job, we find ourselves with our job. And I, and I hope we don't, you know, there's, there is room for talk of, of, of an approved process. But I don't think it really belongs tonight. That, that's my feeling. Be, because of, you know, we, we've got a, we've got a really good candidate and, and nobody disagreed. I, not one person that was, that spoke tonight disagreed. So anyway, my, my congratulations are to Chief Young. I think we do need to have this discussion. Although I, I got to tell you, the people that, that I have spoken to about the need for a good police force are, are overjoyed tonight. So I just forward that through.
Thank you.
For acknowledging me.
Thank you.
Chair, can I follow up with the comment and the motion?
Please.
So I, I, I disagree with, with Councilmember Hare, but it's not the first time. I'm sure it's not the last. And, but I don't hold what he shares against him. The Councilmember Hare has shared it. And I do believe that we have honored Eric Young tonight. I don't think we have dishonored him in any way. I think what we're talking about is the dishonor to the community who has been involved with us for many, many years, who have told us for many, many years that, that they want to have a lot of involvement in this process. And so it's not ever going to be my intent. And I, I don't believe Eric Young ever feels that it is my intent or our, our collective intent to dishonor him. It's to, I think he, I hope that he shares our view, that we need to honor the people who volunteer and serve this community and live with us. So it's, just as Councilmember Hare has spoken his truth, I, I wish to speak my truth through a motion and look forward to giving all of us an opportunity to speak our truth through a vote on this motion as well. I think that we do have room to grow in terms of the, improving the process. And so I make a motion to direct council staff to draft an ordinance for council consideration that outlines a process for considering advice and consent of department directors. Council staff is also directed to research additional recommendations to further improve the transparency of that process and opportunities for community engagement.
I second.
Just a little bit of clarifying, maybe from the council staff or the legal department, can we take a motion for something that is not on the, on the agenda?
So this isn't a final action. So unless Gary has something else to say, I think it's okay. It's not a final action. It's just giving direction to the staff. I, you know, I, I don't think it's an issue.
I would look at it as basically a recommendation. Ultimately, the leadership will determine what ends up on the agenda.
Okay.
Will we have a discussion on this, Chair?
Yes, please.
I mean, at a later date. I, I think it's important for us to discuss it as a council, maybe at a work session or so forth.
I'm, I'm sure this will be discussed at length in the weeks and months to come. So yeah, I don't think it's going to be finalized or taken care of tonight. So.
So for just some clarification, so if it's a recommendation, do we need a motion or do you just want to?
May I, may, may, may I say something about that, Councilwoman Vice Chair? So I think there is a motion on the floor in a second. And if we are allowed to do that as council members, after discussion, we need to vote on it. That's what I think. And if there is something legal that prevents us, prevents us from, from doing that, if we can hear from the attorney, then, you know, explain it to us. But if not, we, we need to honor the motion and the second.
Just because we haven't done it in the past doesn't mean that it can't be done or that we shouldn't be doing it. It probably shows us that exactly what we should be doing is taking a motion and taking a vote.
If you're asking for legal input, the input is, I think every vote is appropriate to have a discussion regarding. And so I don't, I don't see the discussion as being the problem. The only problem with the vote would be if it was a final decision, because you can't make a final decision at a public meeting without having it on an agenda. And that's why I said, I think you should look at it as more in the form of a recommendation.
Yeah.
And Chair, if I might, from the staff's perspective, we would work on this whether you voted, whether, whether there was a motion and a second and a vote or not. I mean, we've taken that direction and, and we will certainly work on that. But i- if it's important to Councilmembers Nadolski and Luis to have a vote, then that's certainly up to you.
Okay.
You know, you can move forward.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any further discussion from council members? If not, we can go ahead and take the vote. I'm not seeing any movement. I'm assuming this is a voice vote.
Voice vote.
Okay. This would be a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. To have a discussion and then go to the vote. I, I know the council, our staff is going to do their, their necessary information about this, but I still think we should have a discussion before we decide on that.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I couldn't tell. Were, were, was Councilmember Stevens the only descending vote? Okay, that passes. And thanks for your explanation, Councilmember Stevens.
I'm, I'm not against the pro, the process of going through and looking at how we can improve the process. I just, I'd just like to have a discussion on a, as a council. And then, then look at the voting process.
And that's, I, I believe that's exactly what this will, will do. Is that right, Chair?
I, it's, I, I, I think we're going to have to have the council staff put together some parameters and then, yeah, and, and then work with administration also and see.
I mean, we're going to, whatever the council staff puts together and brings to us, we're going to discuss it.
Yeah, we'll discuss. This will definitely have to come back to us.
So.
And we can't do anything, we can't do anything more until it does come back to us and then make.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. Perfect.
I was just going to say, maybe Councilmember Nadolski, you could restate your, your motion, just so that people understand. This is not about changing an ordinance or anything and making a final rule. It's about asking staff to look at recommendations.
We just approved a motion that, sorry, that's my cat behind me, that directed staff to evaluate the process that we're using and to research recommendations to bring more transparency and to further improve the process so that we can have better opportunities for community engagement. I don't, I can't really think of, and I actually wrestled with the wording of the motion. And I can't really think of a more simple motion that that could be more supportable. But I just think it's important that we put our votes on the record so that people know where we stand and that we're taking genuine action. I feel strongly that, you know, passing resolutions is great. But I really feel even more strongly about taking action. And we took action tonight by approving an honorable man. And we as a community are blessed to have Eric Young as our new chief of police. And I just wanted to take further action to show this community that we care enough to take that action and to put our commitment into a vote, that we're not just saying words, that we're actually we're taking action on it. Thank you.
If I may add to, to these, you know, th- this part actually does make me sad and disappointed. The notion that anybody's going to question our duties as a council or as a council member to be able to make a motion on the floor or the dais and have a second and have a vote on it. That is sad to me and that is disappointing to me. So just for the record, there's seven of us. Everybody has the right to say what they think. At the end of the day, that's the democracy. So this part does make me sad.
Chair, may I make comment?
Please.
And I think too, and the reason I support this recommendation is because, you know, even as we are going through this process, I had questions myself about what our role was or what advice and consent means or, or how we're going about doing the process, because it's only the second time I've been involved in the process. So I don't think there's any harm in reevaluating timeline or things that are within our parameter and as council members and for the community to really understand how our form of government has set up our role. It will just aid in the bed in that transparency that we're all talking about all the time, that we want to make clear what our role is versus administration. So I don't, I don't think there's any harm in approaching it that way.
Okay. Thank you.
I, Chair, I just think that, I hope they don't get the idea that I don't support it. Is, is that I was thinking that, looking at the process, looking at what our responsibilities are would be, would be very important to us. And, and that's what I support. I, if we need to, to look at how different things are, are done, then we, we have that opportunity to do that. But my, I, when I voted no, is that I, I wanted a discussion and then look at the possibilities of voting for it. I think it would, it would go in that direction. But I, I don't, non-support. I think it's a good idea to go ahead and review it, aspect of it.
Okay. Thank you for. Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Any other comments? If not, we will open it up to public comment. Okay. I think, I'm not sure if we have anybody new or not, Eric on here. Um, looks like we've had some people leave.
Yeah, it looks like we have a couple.
If you wouldn't mind just telling people again how to go ahead and be part of the public comment process.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair. If you'd like to participate in tonight's public comment portion of the meeting, uh, you must be joining us via Zoom. And you can raise your hand by using the raise hand feature at the bottom of your Zoom application. And for those of you joining us via telephone, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine. Please state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
Thank you. Okay. I see a couple with their hands raised. So with that, we'll go ahead. Oh, and right out of the gate, I get to see if I've made the proper corrections. We have Heath Sato with his hand raised. So go ahead, Heath, the time is now yours.
Thanks. Good job.
I'm learning.
Hello, everybody. Heath Sato, Ogden resident. I was deeply shaken by the events of January 6th in our nation's capital, as I'm sure all of you were. It made me pause to think about what's important. I was just recently selected to be the artist to create a monumental sculpture for a new city hall that is located in Florida. And in my presentation, I used a quote I'd like to share with you tonight. The Japanese writer Riuno Suke Satoru said, individually, we are one drop. Together, we are an ocean. As this quote by Satoru implies, the ocean is only collectively powerful. A single drop won't change a coastline, but enough drops together can create great change. This concept of the ocean as a collective force, something that is stronger together, is very much part of what a city hall and a community represent to me. As you may have noticed, I always have a lot to say and three minutes is never enough. So I tend to get right into the heart of whatever I'm concerned with about, uh, with you guys, um, without any chit chat. And I'm sure a lot of the time it might feel like I'm just throwing punches here. So this week, even though I do have so many things I'd like to talk about, I'm going to push it aside to thank you all. Every one of you on city council has a virtually thankless job. You're not paid squat for the hours you have to put in. You have to absorb all the crap the community throws your way with patience and a diplomatic smile. And you are responsible for making choices and decisions that will affect the lives of a lot of people, sometimes for a generation or more. And as individuals, you're not given much power in the strong mayoral system we use in city government here. So I do get it. It has to be exhausting. I don't have the patience or the capacity for diplomacy that your job requires. But even to those I strongly disagree with, I am grateful you are here doing this important work. And that's basically what I wanted to say tonight. Thank you for doing what you do for our community. I'll be back next week and I might say words that sound rough or impatient, but I want you to know that like you, I care about the community we create together. I will always want and ask for what I believe is best for us as a community. And whenever I feel like something could be done better, you will never have to guess what I'm thinking. My voice may shake. I may sound angry. I might even be very angry in that moment. But I want all of you to know that I do appreciate the role every one of you fills in this community. See you next week.
Thanks, Heath. Okay. Next, we have Betty Sawyer. Go ahead, Betty. The time is now yours.
I'd just like to thank everyone again for the time that you've taken to listen and consider the voices of other members of your, of the community. Uh, having this vote tonight represents a small gesture, uh, that you value and affirm those who have taken the time out to be engaged in this process. It's important. Uh, I consider myself a public servant in another capacity. And everyone that chimed in tonight are servants as well. And we just applaud your service and just encourage you to continue to, to stand up and speak up with us as well, because we all have the same goal in mind to, to make Ogden the best Ogden it can be. And we're all investing all we can to do that. But it is important that we listen, value and affirm each other's humanity during these processes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Betty. And I think you're a public servant in every capacity. So thank you. Um, next up, we have Angel Castilla. Go ahead, Angel. The time is now yours.
Angel Castillo, Ogden resident, and just thank you so much, City Council, for, for being willing to do something that might not be very easy. It is always difficult to speak truth to power. And we have challenges in our community to try to unite us. And the gesture that you made with having this consideration for a vote and to explore the system and how it can work better for the goals that we want as a community are, are wonderful. And, and I really appreciate that you would, you would do that. I wholeheartedly agree with absolutely everything that Angela said. It is so unfortunate that we had to have this conversation when we were appointing Chief Young, who not a single person said anything negative about him because he's truly a wonderful person. And, and he has great experience and I'm sure he's going to be a really great chief. But as Ben said, this is the time to talk about it because this, we can't just have these things go on as they are when our society has changed, our culture has changed, and we have a bridge of trust that is very, very shaky between the community, especially communities of color and the police department. And we're all trying to do the work to, to build that bridge because we're going to be stronger together. And again, just thank you for listening and I, and I hope that we'll be more transparent as we move through to other processes and, and I heard a couple of times tonight, you know, well, that's the way we've always done it. As, as a marketing consultant, if I had a dollar for every single time a client had told me that, I, I, I wouldn't probably be coming to city council meetings because I'd be on an island somewhere. It happens a lot. And, and it's good to question processes because there's always room for improvement. And nothing is broken by reviewing something and seeing where it's strong and where it's weak and whether or not there is something that needs to change to have it be a better tool for your box. So thank you again for everything that you do. I'm extraordinarily happy that you have heard the community and that are, you're willing to look into this and to see where change might be necessary for the highest outcome for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Angel. Okay, next up is Taylor Cano. Go ahead, Taylor. The time is yours.
Hello, everyone. Thanks again for letting me make a comment tonight. Um, I want to reiterate what, what Ms. Betty and others have said about thanking you all for your time and your thoughtful consideration of tonight's public comments. You know, I've said this, uh, many, many times now, that to be civically engaged is very taxing. I'd much rather be throwing the ball with my dog Ted or enjoying a glass of wine with my husband or even FaceTiming my nieces and nephews, but I am here on a Tuesday night to be civically engaged. That said, to be engaged, um, it becomes emotionally, spiritually, mentally and even physically taxing when you feel like you're screaming into the wind the same message time and time and time again, which is simple and clear, but often ignored and in tonight's example, dismissed, belittled and even faulted by council member higher, which I find insanely, insanely, um, rude, to be quite honest. Engagement at any level of time, talent or treasure should be valued regardless of its quantity or quality. And the fact that dozens of community members came today to engage in the process and they were, like I said, belittled and dismissed, um, I just asked why, um, those comments were made in a way that discourages future engagement with this council, when the motion you guys made today was to do exactly that, to engage in the community. Again, I'll reiterate my first comment I made. This was never about the product. Chief Young is an impeccable and incredible man. This is about the process and a process that we have made comments on time and time again. A process that, um, creates distress with communities, especially the communities we are tasked to serve. And I just think that, um, our elected officials today should take a little bit of a pause to ask themselves why they are doing this job and who they're doing this job for. Because at the end of the day, uh, we as a community are trying to create spaces and places where everybody belongs. And that job's really difficult when you feel like those with the bully pulpit and the authority to make change in your community are working against you and diminishing the work you're trying to do. Uh, thank you and you guys have a good night.
Thank you, Taylor. Okay, it looks like we have Malik Dyo next. Um, go ahead, Malik. The time is now yours.
Okay, Malik Dyo, uh, I'm the president of El Comite Social Justice Movement, uh, here in Ogden. And I want to go ahead and echo, uh, what everybody else said, uh, thankful for being able to continue this dialogue and that the, uh, council members that voted in in favor of the conversation, uh, made that effort to do so. Um, that is promising. I also want to bring up a concern that, uh, wasn't addressed by any of the councilman, members of the mayors and, and the mayor, and that's the, uh, threat of domestic terrorism that the FBI said is gonna be present in all 50 state capitals and local government buildings. I want to know what steps the, uh, Ogden city's taken to ensure that our departments, uh, have not been infiltrated by these extremist ideologies and, uh, make sure that there's a plan in place to, uh, confront that threat if it, if it's, uh, so arises. One more time too, I just want to congratulate, uh, Chief Young and, uh, myself and my group. We look forward to, uh, working with him in the future. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Malik. Okay, um, looks like, let's get that reset. Okay, it looks like Adrian Andrews is next up. And go ahead, Adrian. The time is now yours.
Sorry about that. It's Adrian Andrews. I work and play in Ogden and I'm incredibly, um, I'm incredibly excited about what can happen next. Uh, there's a quote that when we know better, we can do better. And so I think that if there was ever a question of whether or not members of the community wanted to engage or have input or insight, I think now that you all know, we do. And I just want to congratulate Chief Young again. As I said, I worked with him in the past, look forward to working with him, uh, moving forward. And I know that we will do great things. And, um, I really think our council, the fact that you are all doing this work and could get me or compel me to miss putting my baby to bed tonight to be here with you says a lot. Thank you for putting the time in and the energy and being willing to do even more work because we know that it will make us better as a community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Adrian. Okay, I believe that is, oh, there is one other. I believe it's a call in. So go ahead. It says call in user number two. So go ahead, call in user. The time is now yours.
Are they muted, Chair?
I don't think that's muted.
No?
I don't know.
Can you hear them?
They have to hit star six.
Star, yeah.
Or star nine, one of the two. I can't remember.
Eric, can you give them direction again?
Yeah, um, star nine is how you raise your hand. And
I think it's unmuted.
Hi, they're unmuted. So they should be able to.
It looks like your, the hand is raised. And they're unmuted.
They have to do it on their phone as well. That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
I'm on a lot of electronic meetings.
Maybe it's a silent protest.
I don't know. Um, can we go ahead and move on to comments from administration and council members? And if we get this call in user back, maybe we'll take it later.
I agree.
Okay. Um, then we'll now take comments from the mayor.
Hey, I, I appreciate the dialogue and all the conversations that have tonight. And I appreciate where all of you are. This has been an exceptional year for all of us. And I really do appreciate your support of, of Chief Young. I think he's gonna be amazing. And if we need to talk about process and how that works, we can do that. But he really was, the police department's a, a unique division where you need to have relationships. You need to be working with the community, need to have all of that. And opening that up for a national search was just a, a tough deal. We've been working with Eric for four years. Even though he's a Broncos fan, I, I can't support that, but I can support the efforts that he's made and what he's done in our community. And I appreciate the support and I know that he will too, and so his department. And the stability in the department is really critical right now. So thank you for that. And I'll leave it at that. And, and I'll just give you our commitment to continue to work with the community and you all on, on having that open dialogue.
Thank you. Comments from council members.
I have a quick comment. Oh, go ahead, go ahead, please.
Uh, I, yeah, I'll give a comment. Since I was kind of called out in those last things, I, I am surprised that's what Taylor heard. And that was certainly not what I intended to convey. I think I specifically thanked everyone that had, um, expressed an opinion and said that I appreciate those opinions and that we need to hear those. My concern was just with the timing. Not that we, you know, had the concern about the process. I just felt it was, uh, it was better if we did it and it, you know, not to rain on Eric's parade, so to speak. That was my, that was the sum of what I intended to convey. It had nothing to do with, um, any, any comments to that contrary.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez, did you have something?
Yes, uh, Chair, I just, very quickly, I, I'd just like to end my contributions for tonight on a positive note. And I'd like to, uh, thank everyone, uh, for being here tonight, uh, the, uh, community members that came to speak to, to us, um, my council member colleagues, the mayor and the administration, our council staff. Kind of echoing what Heath Sato said, uh, I think we're all trying to do the best job we can uh, based on our responsibilities. And we're all trying to represent, um, our community, our constituents, the people that depend on us. And so I, I appreciate everyone for their passion and their, um, you know, and their, and their, and their willingness to, to work together and to have these, uh, important debates that we are becoming accustomed to have, uh, which is absolutely okay. That is why we have the government that we have, uh, the, the, uh, the, the balance of, uh, powers. Uh, and, and so I, I, I appreciate this opportunity to have, uh, strong, robust, meaningful, respectful, uh, dialogue. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
And Chair?
Yes.
Can I take a few minutes?
Please.
It'll just be one or two minutes, but I, I like, uh, Councilman. It'll just be one or two minutes, but I I like Councilman Lopez. I appreciate the comments of our citizens coming in. And, you know, if we think everything is going well, then we're mistaken. And so your comments actually tells us some of the things that need to be taken care of and improved on, and I do appreciate that. And I can say that, you know, Heath, I'll I'll be with great anticipation to hear from you next week. So if you're not there, I'll be very disappointed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
May I make a comment?
You sure may.
I'm used to waiting till everybody else speaks, so I have to remember. I can talk anytime. And and I should just applaud you and Vice Chair White for running the meeting. It is challenging when you're dealing with Zoom and all the technology. So you've done a great job. I'm glad to be out of the hot seat for a little bit. What I wanted to say, too, is obviously I really appreciate everybody's participation in the meeting. And one question I had, and I'm I'm not sure, I mean, this might be more just a side conversation, but speaking to what Malik was talking about, you know, we certainly, I think that's one thing that we can say is we all believe in the power of our government, our municipal government, and would hate to see anything terrible happening to our municipal building, for example. So I'd be interested to hear more about, you know, what the precautions are that we're taking. We're not meeting in person there, but obviously the staff members, some staff members are still in the building. And if there's anything that we're looking out for or what what precautions we're taking, because there have been a lot of threats to different kind of governmental institutions recently.
Thank you.
Chair, if I
Yep.
Yeah, I'll I'll wait in anticipation of the feedback on Councilmember Chaburka's question as well, and Malik Dial's. And I just want to share with my council colleagues and my colleagues in the administrative side, it's not my intention or or my wish ever to to be divisive or to create divisive circumstances. I I want you guys to know, and I hope you already know it about me, but if you don't, I just want to say that, you know, tonight, I'm I'm here in my computer room in my house by myself. My two daughters and my wife are at the gym practicing basketball, and that's where I'm supposed to be. Tuesday nights was the only night that they could get a gym. And and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip half the basketball sessions for the season, which is what dads ought to be doing. But but I want to be here, and I want to be civically engaged, and I want to participate, and I want to contribute. And I made my motion tonight, and I spoke my truth tonight, not because I I'm upset with anybody or that I don't love anybody here. I know that everybody is coming at this, these challenges with love, and they're doing what they believe to be right. And they're doing it by speaking and and acting through their own truths. And I respect that, and I I love that. And I hope you'll respect and love the same for me. And I just want to make the most of the time that I spend away from my my loved ones. And that's just the lesson that I've taken from this time that we've all spent in quarantine, is that we need to cherish the time that we have with one another. And and we need to make good use of the time when we're not with one another. So that's where I'm coming from, and I always hope to speak with kindness and with candor and to serve and to leave with love. And that's that's all I'm trying to do. So thank you so much, you guys.
Thank you. I I don't know if anyone tonight is is able to speak about Malik's question and Councilmember Chaburka's question. I don't I don't know if anybody wants to take that from administration or from the council staff, or maybe wanted to get that message out there once we find those answers. I don't I don't know what the best approach for that is.
Chair, I I'm dubious about us talking about it in a public meeting where it's involving security.
Okay.
Well, I do not think that this would probably be the best environment, but we have been planning, we are working on it.
Thank you. I appreciate, I think, you know, just to acknowledge that is something we're working on is helpful.
It's been on the planning document for a long time. So, yeah, we're very concerned about it, and we're legitimately looking at it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
If I may, just wanted to, excuse me, make the comment that I got a text message for from from Sebastian Benitez. He's the one that was on the call trying to speak. So he just said that he 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 wanted just to thank everyone for their service, and he wanted to congratulate Chief Young for for his new, now his new position in in our city. So I just wanted to pass that on. Thank you.
Thank you. That's cool. In, if there's no one else or no other comments, I would just like to thank a few of you tonight. Thank all of the public that came. I I was, I thought it was very neat, all the people that did come in support of of Chief Young, and I think it speaks highly of the caliber of person that he is. And I'm thankful for the people that came and and asked us to to reevaluate our process. I that was that was that was new to me, and and that that was a new idea and a new concept. And I I see the value in the and the I I can see the the value in in looking at that. And so I appreciate those in our community who who have a desire to be more involved and have a desire to to serve just like we do and 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 take responsibility for our for our community. So I thank them. I also thank the administration for, not just tonight, but for all of their efforts in the past. They've been very good, and and I appreciate the the relationship that we have with the administration and for their willingness to to bring us information and to share with us and to sit down with us and to go over hard and and difficult topics and difficult scenarios. And I appreciate that. And I'm sure that we'll be able to work through this also. So I appreciate the leadership of the administration, and I'm thankful for their their willingness to not only not only teach, but also to lead and or to work with us, but not only but also to lead and and council staff and you count and the other council members. This weekend, I I believe we all had a chance to to communicate with each other and and to share our feelings about different processes and different different forms and different things. And I appreciate that honesty and that willingness to look to to work together and to be united. So I appreciate that, and I'm excited about the direction that we're heading and the direction that we can that we can get to. So I appreciate everything that's that's been said and and the the seeds that have been planted tonight to to help us move forward. So I do appreciate everyone's commitment and 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 love for this community. And I just wanted I just wanted to express that. And with that, if there's no other comments, I would be willing to take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn by Councilmember Chaburka and a second by Councilmember Stevens. This is a voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Thank you all for that meeting. And
Maybe we could take a five minute break, Chair?
That would be fantastic. Do you want to take it now, or should we take it? Well, yeah, I was gonna say, do we need to, or should we open the meeting? But this is fine. Yeah, five minutes is great.
Okay. Well, Chair, are you talking about just, are we gonna move into a closed session?
Yeah.
So if we if we if we just make the motion and move in there and then take the break before we start the meeting, is that
That's what I was wondering. We can just take it, we can just take the five minute break and then and then start in five minutes.
Up to you, Chair. Up to you.
That's what I was thinking, too. That's perfect. Thank you. So we'll meet back here in five minutes.
Thank you.
Any comments from the executive director?
Nothing to say.
Okay. Any comments from other board members? Not seeing any, I would take a motion or be open for a motion to move into a closed executive session.
Chair, I'll make
We adjourn into a closed executive session for one of the purposes listed in the agenda.
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Board Member Hare to move into a closed executive session with a second by Board Member Lopez. This is a roll call vote.
Board Member Chaburka?
Aye.
Board Member Hare?
Aye.
Board Member Lopez?
Aye.
Board Member Nadolski?
Aye.
Board Member Stevens?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
Aye.
Chair Blair?
Aye. So we'll go ahead and get moved into that.